With the open public meetings, Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. Everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselman Chase. Here. Mr. La Court.
Here.
Ms. McGyver.
Here.
Mr. Mettler.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Howke.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Potasnek.
Present.
Mr. Onyaka.
Chairman Ursini.
Here. Okay, first order of business is the minutes from September 17th, 2014.
If there's no discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Counselman Chase. Yes. Mr. La Court.
Yes.
Ms. McGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yeah.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Howke.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Potasnek.
Yes.
Chairman Ursini.
Yes. No resolutions tonight, so the voucher is for the planning board attorney, the usual October retainer of $833.
Again, I move to approve.
Second.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, our attorney is on his way, he's stuck in traffic, he should be here, obviously, as soon as he can get here.
Okay. Do you want to call the roll there for the voucher?
You can do it all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seen? Motion carries. So first hearing tonight, Builders Pro, PLN 14-00010.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know. It used to be that if you were voting to spend money, you did have to take a roll call vote.
So we do it.
So, yeah.
No, we typically do the vouchers by acclamation, we don't know, there's no issue.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, we don't, there's...
Yeah, I mean, as long as we have a motion, that definitely has to happen.
Okay.
Okay. The table, please.
We do it, and then we just turn it together.
It might not be, there's two buttons.
Chairman, my name is Dominic Sermonero.
You know, for those microphones, you really got to hold them.
Talking to that mic.
I will do that, I'm sorry. My name is Dominic Sermonero, and I represent the applicant Builders Pro. This is an application for a minor two-lot subdivision made up of Block 295, lots 29.01, and Block 295, lots 31 and 32. The applicant is the owner of Block 295, Lot 29.01, and is the contract purchaser of Block 295, Lots 31 and 32. The applicant has proposed the subdivision with only one variance, and that variance would be on the frontage, on the northerly lot, being 91 feet versus 100 feet, and the other slot being 109 feet. And the reason for that is, is because the applicant, in talking to the professionals from the township, felt, and so did the professionals, that by doing that, you did not have to eliminate about 1,200 square feet from the lot. So nine feet was sacrificed in the frontage to keep the 1,200 square feet in the lot, so that that would be more recreational area, more area to be enjoyed by the homeowner versus that small deviation in the front. At this point, I'd like to call Mr. Ginsburg, I think who you're familiar with, who is the principal of Builders Pro.
What do we do about swearing in? Okay, I can swear you in. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Ginsburg, would you tell the board what you propose to build on those two lots?
My plan is to build two separate single-family houses, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, two car garages, with a square footage of living space in the range of probably 23, 24 hundred square feet.
And do you have available with you tonight pictures of what it would be proposed of those two houses, if the board wanted to see them?
Of course.
Now, you heard me indicate that the purpose of the variance of the frontage being 91 instead of 100 was to save the square footage of the entire lot, correct?
That's correct.
And you deem that, together with the professionals, to be more important to the homeowner, for the enjoyment of the lot?
Yes, we discussed that, but again, it's not a breaking point if township decides that's something more important, but that's what we did, yes.
Now, there is a right-of-way, obviously, in front of these two lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it presently does not have a sidewalk, correct?
Does not. That block doesn't have any sidewalk, any curb.
But there's presently several trees within that right-of-way, is that correct?
Eighteen.
Preferably, would you prefer to try to keep that right-of-way with all of the trees rather than a sidewalk?
Of course I do, I mean, I guess trees are much more important to keep on.
And would you be willing to apply for a waiver of that sidewalk requirement?
I definitely will.
I have nothing further for Mr. Ginsburg at the moment. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, are there other sidewalks in the area?
No.
Okay.
I think the one thing, though, to keep in mind in this discussion is that it is near the Franklin Middle School, and it is in an area of the township where, even if there aren't connections, the township is trying to have the developers actually construct them. I know certainly in more rural areas of the town, where there are no potential connections, we've waived it. This is an area in town where you might want to require it.
Again, that, oh, I'm sorry. Again, that was what you would favor, but you're not necessarily even at this point asking for a waiver, but if the board wanted to see those trees to remain and other plantings, you would be willing to do that, is that correct?
Of course, of course, and I was asked by one of the members of planning board if I'm willing to save as many trees as possible, so my idea is coming from the same point. Of course, to my understanding, trees are much more important, especially eighteen of those, some of them 28 inches, it's a nice trees, so I'd like to save as many as I can.
Again, I have nothing further for Skinsberg unless there are any other questions.
Any other questions from the board at this juncture?
Mike?
Yes, Carl.
The sidewalk could be pushed closer to the curb that's proposed in order to save the trees, as well as the houses could potentially be flipped, meaning the driveways on the opposite side as shown, in order to save more of the trees which are in the township right-of-way, correct?
Absolutely, the only problem is, even if I push, let's say, half-foot or foot, or even two-feet sidewalk towards the road, I'm going to kill all those roots, and later on, those trees is going to die, no matter what I do. So there is no way to save the big trees if I cut the roots. And of course, the trees are big enough to have the roots all over the place, so, I mean, to my understanding, there is sidewalk, or there is no sidewalk, curb, or no curb, whatever I cut, trees are dead.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. You know, I, my personal preference would be, well, first of all, maybe one thing that can be done, since there are, you know, other trees, and a fair number of trees that are slated to come down, is maybe we could ask Mark or someone to go out to the site and just see what is feasible there, but I'm of the opinion that we should, you know, grant the sidewalk variance, I mean, it's two houses. If there were other sidewalk connections in the area, and it looked like, you know, something was actually going to happen to make sidewalks through that area, that would be one thing, but you're going to have two sidewalks, a sidewalk in front of two houses leading to absolutely nowhere, so I don't see the point in that.
Doesn't help to the town, just kills the tree, to my understanding. How many bedrooms are you building in this place?
Four.
In each house?
Each house.
That's eight bedrooms.
Four bedrooms.
Eight, together with two houses, right?
Yeah.
How many children is that?
I'm sorry?
How many children is that? They have to walk to school, but can't walk on a sidewalk, they have to walk in the street. If you know this area, you don't want to be walking in the street.
Right. But right now, all kids are walking through the street, I don't, again, I agree...
You may, that may be true, because this is an older, developed area, but there's a lot of pressure coming out of this area for curbs and sidewalks to be installed, so the kids are walking safely.
Understood, well...
I understand it too, but...
If we're going to install sidewalk and curb only along two houses, will that help the kids to go along?
Well, they need to pay for it.
Well, hold on.
What we've done in the past is, the applicant has paid into the sidewalk fund that the township has, then when the township is ready to put through the sidewalks, the money is there to pay for them.
Yeah, and I think this is really a planning concern, you know, the applicant is willing to do either one. The applicant, whatever the board wants, you want them to build the sidewalks, they'll build the sidewalks, the trees have to go. You don't want them to build the sidewalks, the trees stay, whatever the board wants, I think that's what the applicant says, that's what he'll do.
That was the point, whatever the board wanted.
Well, that's fine, we're just trying to find a compromise, what's the sidewalk fund called?
They pay, they give us a cost estimate, and based on whatever their linear foot, you know, their cost per foot, they pay into the fund instead of building it, and if two years, five years, 10 years down the road, whether it's there or someplace else, so instead of having to build it there, or if it's there, they build it someplace else, so it's whatever the board wants to do, the board can decide.
You know, the applicant would be willing to do that, I think it would be a lot less than taking all those trees out, and, you know, you take care of Jim's concern, which is, you know, you come along and build something, and we don't want the sidewalks now, but we may want them in the future, et cetera, and I think that's a good compromise.
Agreed, from my point.
Ted?
I wish I'd brought with me my list of sidewalk prioritization, because the township is actively planning building sidewalks in the vicinity of the middle school, and I think Hillcrest, although probably more on the other side of Burger, was very high on the list. So I'm very conflicted, on the one hand, I like to preserve trees, the environmental commission asked about preserving the trees, and on the other hand, if the board decides to preserve the trees and not build the sidewalks, I'll probably get beaten up by the rest of the council for not asking for the sidewalks.
Well, I think the sidewalk fund is really a perfect compromise, because as Councilman Chase said, the township is currently reviewing where sidewalks may go in this area, and for all we know, this section of Hillcrest may or may not be one of those streets, and may, they may decide that it should go on the other side of Hillcrest and not on this side of Hillcrest.
That's true, they could go on the other side of the street.
They may go on one of the parallels, end or one of the parallel streets, and...
Well, this is most likely, because it's the closest to the school.
And this applicant is paying basically their fair share towards that improvement, whether it happens, ends up in front of their property or not.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise, I mean, that way, nobody gets beat up.
I'm not sure what the concern is, I think we have a perfect scenario, there's no immediate need for them, we're going to get the money for them anyway, it's not going to cost the town theoretically money to build those later, because we're collecting it from the builder ahead of time. I like to save trees as much as anyone, but I can think of a dozen projects in the recent past where we have really, we should have had sidewalks and didn't, so this gives us a perfect option, I don't even know why we discuss it at this point.
I do have a question, with regard to the valuation, does that include just the installation of the sidewalks, given linear feet?
Just a sidewalk.
So in this case, one thing I think we could discuss is, if those sidewalks were to go there, the trees need to be removed, that is an expense, would that also be in the fund, in the event that it is that side of the street?
To be consistent, to be fair, we've always charged them, every applicant, both in the zoning and planning board, for the last eight or nine years, just the cost of the sidewalk installation.
So not the cost of removing the trees, replanting new trees?
Correct, just the cost of the sidewalks.
So we wouldn't recover that, in the event that that was the side of the street that was on the map?
That is true, but we...
It would become a deficit to the...
I think it's important to be consistent and fair, so that would be my recommendation. The board can do whatever they want, but to be consistent and fair, it's always just been the cost of the linear foot.
You know, it's better to get something than nothing, it just makes no sense to take the trees out now and put two houses worth of sidewalk in when there's nothing to connect them to. If the township master plans it such that it's all connected, then it would make a lot more sense to do it now, but at least, you know, you have something and you're not spending all the cost.
I have nothing further for Mr. Ginsburg.
Do you have any other witnesses?
Yes.
I don't think you really need anyone else, I mean, do you?
Well, who do you have?
Well, I have Mr. Fletcher, who is the engineer and planner, only to address any issues that...
Well, you do have the variance, so it would be good to get testimony as to what they think that is, so why don't we swear the planner in, and he can also testify as to whether you're compliant with all the staff comments, so why don't we do that?
Thank you. I'll keep it short. I ask that, in addition, Fletcher, in, I believe the board is familiar with him, I ask that his credentials be accepted.
Yeah, you're a certified planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're accepted, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Can you just state your name and firm association, just for the record?
Certainly. My name is Paul J. Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R, I'm a professional planner and a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, I'm the principal of Fletcher Engineering and have been so for 22 years, I've been in front of this board a number of times, and in front of Mr. Mettler numerous times.
Everyone's been in front of Mr. ... Go right ahead.
Let me just jump right to it, Mr. Fletcher, there is that one variance that is proposed, correct? That's correct.
Would you mind, you want to pick up the other mic, just because it won't pick up on the tape?
I don't think that was working, was it?
No, it still isn't, unless I'm just not doing... The mic on the stand there is working.
Yeah, you can grab it off the stand.
Why, we never have more than two out of three.
Sometimes two out of three is a good break.
Fletcher, as a result of that variance, do you feel that there is any negative criteria to the, either the zoning laws or the public good, as a result of that nine-foot deviation of the frontage of that one lot?
No, I believe that the variance can be granted under C1 and C2 criteria of the municipal land use law. I think it's a slight hardship in the fact that we have full frontage in this property of 200 feet, but because of the unique shape, the lack of depth on the left side, we're not able to provide fully conforming lots. We are conforming with regards to area, and I did bring an exhibit, if the board would like to see it, that shows other lots in the area, the orange-coated ones are substandard with regards to the lot area. If I could perhaps put this into evidence?
Sure, just mark it as Exhibit A1, and you can distribute it to the board.
I looked at the neighborhood, and the subject property is in blue, the properties that are, most of them 80 feet in width, are highlighted in orange, and I present this just to show the board that this variance we are requesting is not inconsistent with the existing neighborhood pattern of development, I therefore conclude that there's really no adverse impact to the neighborhood, there's no adverse impact to the zone plan or the master plan of the township of Franklin.
Thank you. I would ask you now if you would address the engineering report and the planners' report.
You know, the only thing I actually need for you to do with all the staff reports is indicate any areas where you can't comply, or want to discuss with the board, if you comply with everything, well, you do say that.
Thank you.
We can comply with everything in the reports.
Okay, I'd love to hear that.
Mr. Chairman, just have one question, in the engineer's report, there's a comment about the garage, I think it's merely more of an illegal question, what's your response to that question?
There is a house, and then there is a garage, the garage is on the property owned by Builders Pro. That property was surveyed, that property has been insured fully by a title company in the state of New Jersey. Apparently, also, there's been an indication from the woman who resides in the house, who I believe is somewhere in her 80s, indicating that that garage has been used by anybody in years and years and years and years, she has no knowledge of it.
Just do me a favor, just, I'm sorry, just, it won't pick up.
It's Italian.
Yeah.
She's indicated she has, if she ever, family ever had anything to do with it, she's not interested in it, the best thing in the world is it be demolished, and that's what the intention is.
The bottom lines, if there's any claims of adverse possession, it'd be her claim, and she's not claiming it, and you're going to demolish the house, the garage, because it's on your client's property.
Exactly, it was explored, but there is no claim.
Okay, got it.
Great.
And just real brief, in terms of the overall, big picture for the subdivision, basically, you have, you need 30,000 square feet to have two compliant 15,000 square foot lots, and you have 32 and change.
Correct.
So you could have two compliant lot areas, two lots compliant in terms of lot area, and you have 200 feet of frontage, you could have two compliant lots in terms of frontage, but you can't have both. You basically have to, you know, it's really, and I agree with you, I think it really is a matter of the configuration of the lot itself, it's kind of, it is kind of a unique situation, I'm not sure if it, you certainly don't see that all the time. I made a comment in my report about whether it should be, you know, two compliant lots in terms of lot frontage or lot area, if the applicant's proposing to have two compliant lots in terms of lot area, I don't really think it's a matter of any great importance, nonetheless, the applicant's asking for the frontage variance.
Well, you could start nine feet over, further over, and have a slanting line back, and I think you'd still, would you still have complying area?
No, look, there's really no way to slice it that you can get...
The total square footage.
And you, you're discouraged from having lot lines that don't go perpendicular.
Yeah, because that just messes up the...
Even if it looked good on paper.
Right, Ted is correct, you could do it, but then the neighbors don't know where their line is, and it gets very, very confusing, so...
If you need any justification for the variance, this property is either just inside or outside the old redevelopment zone.
Yes.
And in that particular area, whether it is just outside or inside, one of the master plan goals is infill housing in the area, this seems to fit perfectly, that justifies a nine-foot variance, or a 1,200-foot variance, whichever way you want to go, I prefer, myself, keep the lot area the same, and the frontage is 91 feet, no one would ever know except the people living there, and it does fit in with the master plan and the plan for the general area.
Any other board comments? Okay.
I would have nothing further.
Okay, with that, motion to open to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the meeting be opened to the public for a hearing on this application.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, come forward.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, if there are no other board comments, we can entertain a motion.
I move to approve this application with the conditions that we've stated.
Second.
Vince, we have a motion in a second, so if you please.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. McGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yeah.
Mr. Pettit?
Since the applicant will be contributing to the sidewalk fund, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Howke?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Potasnek?
I'm going to vote no, due to the fact that it's not equivalent to what's needed for the sidewalks.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes. Thank you, approved, congratulations. The next hearing is PLN 07-0005, Gianato, Galen Michael.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be helpful if I gave a brief summary of this application. In 2007, Mr. Gianato came for a subdivision which was approved, in 2008, as I think most of the board was here back then, he came to amend that. Subsequent to that, the deeds unfortunately were not filed, so the one thing he needs is an extension of time to file the deeds, he is entitled to that, the approval is extended via the Permit Extension Act, but he needs a formal action, he also needs a relief of conditions, because the original condition of the approval was to build pretty much exactly the same house that Mr. Gianato has built for his own residence, he is proposing a smaller house, and he wants approval to do that, it's a relief of conditions. In addition, he needs a series of five different variances, the first one is for a shed in the backyard, where the setback is 25 feet minimum, and it's at 14.09, the second is where the lot coverage is at 12.5, and he's requesting 15%, which is the maximum in the R20 zone. Also, he needs a variance for the existing lot where his home is, impervious coverage, where 20% is the maximum, and he's requesting 25.6. And then on the adjacent lot, which he's looking to develop in the very near future for another house, he would like the lot coverage where he was granted a variance for 11.88%, he would like to go up to 15%, which is the maximum in the R20, and the impervious coverage where 20% is the maximum and 25% is what he's requesting, which is the maximum in the R20.
Excuse me, before we start the hearing, where is the plan for the two lots? I see a site plan there for the, where the single-family home is presently, what's, where's the other lot?
I'm...
You're referring to another lot?
He was granted a two-lot subdivision.
And now he's going to change something on that lot?
He's not changing the subdivision line, the subdivision line stays the same.
He's reducing the size of the house, or what is he doing? I don't understand.
He's doing a couple things, first of all, he's requesting that an existing shed on...
I understand that.
And on the second lot, which nothing is built on, he is requesting that he can use the R20 standards instead of the R40 standards for lot and impervious coverage, he's not changing any of the setbacks or anything else, or the subdivision line, he's just changing what he wants for lot and impervious coverage, and for the setback for the existing shed.
Is the existing house built to which standard?
The existing house was built, and it's built to the standard as per the subdivision approval.
So, Vince...
Which zone?
It's...
R40 or R20?
It was built with variances to the R40 standards.
So let me try to make sense of these five variants, 25.01, that lot is not yet built upon.
That is correct.
And yet, and so the R20 standards, which we agreed to previously...
You agreed to the subdivision standards, yes, yes.
Right, right, what's the lot coverage and the impervious coverage for the R20 then?
In the R20, you can have 15% lot coverage and 25% impervious.
Okay, so he would be compliant with R20 standards for that lot?
Yes.
On which nothing is built.
That's what he's, he's asked... That, that's, that's what he's, that, he's asking for the variance for that in the future, yes.
Right. And so for twenty-five point oh two, where there is something built, and we previously had granted variances from R forty to R twenty, the applicant now wants a variance from the R twenty?
He, he, well, he wants a variance for the existing shed, which originally was going to be removed.
Uh-huh.
From, it was supposed to be twenty-five feet, it's at fourteen, it was supposed to be removed, it wasn't, which he wants the variance for. He wants, he has the vari, the lot coverage is fine, he was granted the variance for that.
Uh-huh.
But he wants the ability to go from twelve point five to fifteen, in case he wants to put a shed or some other accessory structure. And the impervious coverage is at the existing is twenty-five point six, which is above both the R twenty and the R forty.
So, were the sheds to have been removed, as it was supposed to have been, would that eliminate that variance?
It, it would elim, it would eliminate the, the variance for the, for the imperv, yes.
Well, that would seem to help a lot. Okay, anyway, you've gotten some discussion already, so why don't we turn to the applicant? I take it you're the.
Good evening. Janee Ciccarelli, representing the applicant, Gail and Michael Gianato. How do you say your last name?
Dominic.
Okay, Mr. Dominic.
You just call me Vince.
Mr. Dominic did a, made my job easy, giving a good job of the history. And so I don't think in, there's anything that I would need to add. Only, just to emphasize that, the, it was a one-acre lot subdivided into two half acres, so the R forty standard was applied on the lot that was built, and then the variances were obtained because of the deviation from the R forty.
Right.
But it is a half acre.
Right. When that lot was subdivided to R twenty, to R twenty standards, we agreed that the applicant could have R twenty standards on both of those lots. That's what we agreed to. What I'm having trouble with, and I think the board will too, is now he's come back to a waiver from the R twenty standards, and that's where I have an issue, especially when we could eliminate variances by doing what he said he could do in the first place, which is remove the shed. Because there's a lot of stonework on that existing house, too, that now is increasing impervious coverage. I mean.
Right, but the, the stonework that you're referring to is, and part of the reason for this new variance isn't because the shed wasn't removed, but rather, there was some footstones placed, so not like a foot pathway. And so ultimately, we're talking about a half a percent. And the, the footstone path was placed, you know, to avoid having to walk and get your heels in the mud as you're going through the yard. So it, the variance didn't occur because the shed wasn't removed. It was just this very simple addition that puts it only a half of.
Right, but if the shed was removed, like the applicant originally agreed to, we could eliminate one variance.
Can you use the microphone?
The original application.
You know you've got to swear.
Okay. Raise your right hand, sir. You swear from the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, just please state your name for the record.
Michael F. Gianato. The original application showed two sheds. One very large shed, basically a garage, that I agreed to remove. The second shed, I was asking to, to remain. In fact, it says that on the original plot plan. One was to remain, the smaller one, the one I'm asking for the variance for, of ten feet. But I beg to differ with you that it actually was.
Well, no, it was, it was, it was crystal clear that the shed needed to be removed, because my, my report specifically mentioned that if either shed or both sheds were removed, the variance was to be granted. No variance was requested. All, the approval was based on complying with all staff reports, so that the shed needed to be removed. So while that may have been a misconception, Mike, and, and.
I, I'm not arguing.
And I'm, I'm, I'm not questioning your intent, you may have misconced, but the, the approval was that you need to do that, and you weren't granted the variance, so it needed to be, it needed to be removed, which is why we're at that point.
Okay, thank you.
My additional comment would be, the removal of the shed, what would it put the percentage down to? Because we are also weighing here, taking away the homeowner's shed, you know, which has a very functional purpose, and everyone who owns homes, most of them have sheds. So it seems like we're taking away a lot to gain a little. And so I just want to point that out to the board when we look at removing an entire shed and its functionality for the homeowner and.
What is it, ten by ten?
Comparing that to the quite small variance that is being requested by Mr. Gianato.
Yes, Ted.
What about moving the shed so that it is a compliant distance from the lot line?
I can move the shed, sure, but it still requires. Sorry. I could, I could move the shed out ten feet from where it is, towards the front of the yard. That's not an issue. I think the issue is the coverage. The five, the five percent more that I'm looking for, that's above the R twenty allowed.
Point five.
Point five, a half a percent, yeah. Point five.
Is that what it is?
Well, with, with the extra impervious, according to comment number seven from the, in the engineer's report, you're going to have to do some mitigation on stormwater management.
Well, my engineer has approached that with the engineering company here, or the engineer here, and the lot two, twenty-five oh two will not require it because of the runoff conditions. The next, the other lot will require the drywells, from, from what I understand.
Well, twenty.
The, the report is saying you're going to be over the thousand square foot, square foot.
Mm-hmm.
Of impervious.
Well, if I need it, I'll put it in. I mean, if that's, if that's an issue, then I'll just put the drywell in.
Well, one thought I have is, we give you a variance on the other lot, not to, to twenty-five percent, but to twenty-four point four percent, and then, thus the overall impervious over the two lots is, is okay.
I'll concede to that, sure. The other house is smaller, so it's, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, there's reference in Mr. Dominic's report to asking for a change in the architecture of the house, of the second house, but I don't have any paperwork on that. I don't have a plot, a plot plan or even a survey of.
Well, yeah.
Lot twenty-five point oh one.
Ted, they, they, they have, they asked for a smaller house. Ti, and this is a strange situation, because typically, when you do a subdivision, you really don't care about the house. There was a specific condition that they would build exactly the same house. Now, the house is larger for the neighborhood, and they want to build a smaller house. They have available to give you tonight the type of house they want to build. So if you want to see that, they're more than happy to give that to you. This is a kind of a strange situation where there was a variance, so they, you kind of did approve exactly the same house, which is why you need the relief of conditions.
I'm just concerned that we're being asked to approve a variance without even getting a survey of the lot in question.
Oh, no, we, we, you have, we, we have, we have a survey and a plot plan for both. They're both, they're both.
Why don't we? Why doesn't the board have them?
Well, because that's not the subject of the application tonight, of the subdivision.
Because there's a variance on lot twenty-five point oh one, there are two variances, and yet you don't give us a survey.
Well, we can give that to you tonight if you wanted. I mean, we didn't think it was necessary, because she approved the, the variance for that lot a couple of years ago. But if you need that, we can.
Well, this is asking for further variance for that lot.
Well, well, Ted, oh one, oh one is not built upon yet, and that's just your R twenty standards, right? Nothing, nothing's really changing there.
Right.
This lot that you, we have before us tonight, really, twenty-five point oh two, where the other three variances are sitting, that survey is, is in, is in the application.
I have a question, one more. When the original, when the original approval was granted, it was the, it was, this lot that's developed with the house was supposed to be developed in accordance with R twenty? Yes, no? What were the standards by which this lot?
Well, it really, it really was in, in accordance with the R twenty. There were, it were certain variances granted for setback and lot and impervious to the R forty standards.
And impervious?
Yes.
The variance included impervious?
Yes.
Did we know what kind of house the gentleman was building?
Yes. We knew exactly.
Did we know the driveways? Do we know the shed?
We knew, we knew everything.
Pond and all the rest of that?
We knew everything that he was building.
And you granted him a variance?
And the, the.
For the impervious coverage?
The board granted variances, yes. In two thousand and seven and in two thousand and.
From what, to what?
From the.
What was the original requirement and what did we grant a variance for?
The, the original.
What did the board do?
The original, the original requirements from R twenty were ten percent lot coverage, twenty percent impervious, and there were certain setback variances, both side yard and total side yard.
Lot coverage and impervious.
Right, and those, the R forty is art, is point ten and point twenty.
It's ten percent and twenty percent.
Right, and they, they were granted the variance for twelve point five for, for the lot coverage.
Okay, not.
Well, let's put it this way. They were granted nothing in excess of an R twenty for anything.
Correct.
Right, some of them, like.
All right, Dave, so nothing in excess, all right.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So when there, when, when there's now variances from R twenty, I think that's where we've got to take a closer look.
So, so my question is, are there other solutions to the impervious coverage, like, unless you have a concrete driveway, maybe putting in semi-permeable or permeable driveway material, or something? Flooding obviously is an issue, and so the more coverage we have, and the water's not taken care of that property, other homeowners downstream are either suffering from pollution, from fertilizers and other things, or flooding, which destroys their homes. So, like, we have a responsibility to, you know, stick within the codes that we set up. Is the homeowner or applicant willing to make other changes to drop that percentage of impervious coverage?
But everything, excuse me, everything on this plan is built, is that correct?
Yes.
The driveway's already there, the concrete driveway, the patio wall, pond, all that's there?
Except the eighty-five, I tore out eighty-five feet by four feet of concrete surface that was handicap rated, far, four, four thousand.
That's not, that's not working for, whether it's not on or.
Here's the other one.
I removed the sidewalk that was there from the basement entrance all the way around to the driveway area, which, which is eighty-five feet by four feet wide, four thousand PSI air and drain concrete, so that I can bring down the impervious surface. And I put in stepping stones. I have pictures of it if you'd like to see it, not knowing that stepping stones were impervious. In the town where I was the CO, they were not considered impervious. But however, that's why I'm, I need the variance, because I have those paving stones in place of the concrete that I tore out. It cost me eight thousand dollars, by the way.
Is the dwelling conforming with the square foot area of the dwelling?
Yes.
Conforming to the zone, conforming to your approval?
Yes.
Absolutely.
But you could swap out a few of these stepping stones with something that's permeable, right?
Well, now, now, see, now, see, the, the issue is, as Mike pointed out, that in this municipality, gravel and everything else is considered impervious, unlike other municipalities, so we really can't do that.
There's no other option?
The only, the only option is to remove the shed or other impervious. We, we, anything that is considered partially impervious, pervious, we consider from a zoning perspective impervious. So he, he doesn't have that option.
Well, like, it's like what Ted said. He had the perfect suggestion. If you want to consider the two lots as a whole, which is, you reduce the coverage on the unbuilt lot by half a percent, and we give him the variance, but with the stipulation that the house that's yet to be built on twenty-five point oh one, or whatever impervious coverage is there, is reduced by the same zero point five percent. So at least in the overall lot, you've got the right impervious coverage.
Are the, does that percentage equal the same square feet? Are they the same exact size of spot?
Well, we'd be taking away a half a percent of impervious coverage from the, as yet, as yet to be built house, and in exchange for the half percent over that you've got here, considering the, the lotses, what they were once, were, once were, which is one R forty.
And, and the applicant is willing, is willing to adjust in the variance on the lot that is currently undeveloped, to make that adjustment. And I think that's a very reasonable approach, given the fact that the first lot has already been built upon and there, and it was through inadvertence that he did not realize that these stepping stones would be part of the calculations. So, given those factors, I think it's a very reasonable approach, the applicant's willing to do that. And again, it goes back to the original, which the, the lot itself does, is considered R forty, even though it's been subdivided. So I think that's consistent with everything in the code and with the board's rules in previous variances.
Just to clarify, even if you take the credit on the other lot, if your, your current lot, twenty-five oh two, is more than a thousand square foot of new impervious or additional impervious from the original approval, you will need to do something per section third, three-thirty of the stormwater ordinance.
No one will know the difference.
And I, I would suggest that they post the bond before we sign any kind of deeds, as we've done in the past with tree removals or other things regarding the subdivisions.
I do want to point out that when the initial subdivision and the variances were granted back in two thousand and eight, the Stormwater Act thousand-feet provision wasn't in place at that time, so this is something new. The applicant is willing to work with the, the town and the board to make it work, but this is not something that was left out previously, but something new that with this application, he now has to consider complying with. So I did just want to point that out to the board, so we're taking.
And I agree with you.
You know.
Had it been built by the original plot plan, we wouldn't be sitting here.
No, I'm referencing the, the stormwater.
Correct, and that's correct. Had it been built by the original plot plan, we wouldn't be sitting here.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, everything was crystal clear back in two thousand and eight, and then now it's, now it's not. So, our, our planning board attorney made a good point, which, you know, I'll let him explain if we did this half a percent solution.
Yeah, my only concern with actually swapping out a half a percent on the opposite lot, or on the subdivided lot, is that once the subdivision goes through, before any improvements are made, that lot can actually be sold to a third party. And then you'd basically be trying to hamstring a third party, innocent purchaser in the chain of title, from not being able to do what they'd be allowed to do under ordinance by at least a half a percent. So I don't know if that's a real workable solution, just because there's potential there that a subsequent purchaser could be harmed.
Well, I, I think he's okay, because the, the, the ordinance actually allows him to do much less. We're granting him a variance to do more than.
Than what the ordinance.
Than what the ordinance allows.
Okay.
But, but less than what the R twenty would allow. So I, I, I think if we put him on notice, and maybe we require that to be in the deed, that there's, you know, whatever language you think is appropriate, I don't have a big issue with that.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Because it's, yeah, it's, it's, you get it.
So this is really like an R twenty lot that's giving an R forty?
Right, right, right. And we're going, we're going to allow it to go almost to the R twenty standard, but not quite, even though it's in the R forty zone. Because everything in the area, the hundred homes in the area, were all developed as R twenty. This was the old farmhouse, so it stayed R forty. And now, Mr. Gianato finally said, let's, let's subdivide it, and it just, it made sense. It was a no-brainer when it was originally done seven years ago.
So you'd be amenable to a deed restriction in that secondary lot?
The deed restriction you're referring to is reflecting that the impervious coverage cannot exceed twenty-four point eight. I think that's more than, yeah, I think that's reasonable, because it is still. I think that's more than, yeah, I think that's reasonable, because it is still a variance above, as Mr. Dominic pointed out, above the standard. So you're really not taking anything away from a subsequent purchaser.
We're just preserving the principle of trying to maintain the limits on impervious surface, which ultimately, you know, protects us from amount of stormwater runoff and things like that.
But just to be clear, we are actually bumping it up from what it was approved in two thousand and eight, which was the fifteen percent limit. Now we're going to adding five percent. So we're talking about the five percent as if we already gave the, we're talking about the point five percent as if we already gave the five percent, right?
Well, yeah, because...
We haven't decided it, you know?
Because what happened was is that this whole neighborhood is an R twenty development. It's an R forty, but it was developed as twenty thousand square foot lots. It's just one of these things that probably, as Ted would, yeah, it's, probably we should at some time rezone R twenty, because it really is an R twenty development. So when Mr. Giannato came in, it was, oh, yeah, a hundred homes in the neighborhood is sixty years ago, were twenty thousand square foot lots. So probably in the future, we should really rezone it, so they all should meet the R twenty, not the R forty standards, because they are twenty thousand square foot lots. That's just, in fairness and in equity, that's what should be done.
Great, thank you.
So what does the board feel about the shed? I mean, the rear yard variance was not granted in two thousand and eight, because he said he was going to move the shed. Now he's not going to move the shed and he wants a variance. I don't know, that just sticks in my craw.
Can he move the shed?
He can move the shed.
Does he change the size?
No. But I mean, you know, here's the thing, we're, you know, this applicant, here's the deal. Whatever we grant tonight, I don't ever want to see you back here. I mean it, because you're playing us. You didn't file the subdivision deeds, we had to go for an extension. Now you're jerking us around with the lot size than the last time. You come back with this other house, you're going to jerk us around, because you can try to build the sandals with a bunch of concrete and come in over the impervious coverage. You're not going to do it again. Do we have an understanding? No. Do we have an understanding?
Yes.
You know, you're not sworn in.
I have to say this.
No, no, you're not sworn in.
You're going to be sworn in first.
Well, go ahead.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth?
I do.
Nothing but the truth. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Gail Giannato. And I have to tell you, this whole thing has been a fiasco. We have, from the get-go, the deeds weren't our fault, the whole thing. We have paid over fifteen thousand dollars in taxes on a piece of property that is not a subdivision. So to add insult to injury, we have suffered also. So it wasn't intentional.
It may not have been, but when you come back before the board, time and again, and, you know, ask us to do stuff, I mean, the stuff is laid out, but when you say you want a side yard or a rear yard variance for the shed, which you didn't come for in the first place, see, I'm okay if all the cards are laid out on the table to begin with. If you wanted the shed and didn't want to move it, tell us that in two thousand and eight.
We did. We did remove a shed.
But then why are we coming back for this one?
Use the microphone, please.
You know, can we just go back to where you were admonishing me for not, not coming back to this board again?
I'm sure you don't want to, I'm sure you don't want to.
And I think because of the unique situation where there was a subdivision, and they didn't build simultaneously, that has been why, made changes to the size of the house. Because after building on the lot and, and living there and seeing the use of the lot, that informed his decision in how can I better build on the second lot to comply with these standards. So, at this point, I think it's, the change in the second lot is definitely informative. And I don't, as Mrs. Giannato said, it really wasn't intentional, and there was a little bit of miscommunication, and they're seeking to rectify it here tonight and seeking to adjust the plans accordingly on the second lot to compensate, and, you know, taking a more realistic approach. I mean, you do something once and you realize the mistakes that you made, or how it can be better. And so this is an example of that. And so as they go forward, I don't think there'll be any issues with the second lot. They're downsizing the size of the house and asking for the full variance that they would need or any homeowner would probably anticipate needing on that size lot. So I don't think there'll be any future issues, and we can just go forward.
Stay with one attorney? Lanford comes for one. Yeah, well, there may be, that may actually be telling you something.
I have a question, though, you know?
That also might be telling you something.
I have a question.
Jim, and then...
Back in oh eight, when the subdivision, lot plan, whatever it was, was approved, with all the conditions that applied to it, why didn't you build in accordance with the approved plan? Why didn't you build what you were approved to build? You got an approval, I don't have the plans in front of me from oh eight.
Okay.
You got an approval to do something in oh eight.
Yes.
You got variances in oh eight.
Yes.
But why didn't you comply with them?
I thought I did.
No, you didn't, you're back, you're relieved.
The, I didn't do the calculations for impervious, the engineer did, that did it.
Sir, I don't care if you did it, your attorney did it, you're the guy that's here now. You're the gentleman who's here now.
So I think the miscommunication, I think overall, that he did conform to the plans. The only issue here is the shed, and there was a miscommunication at the time.
Well, let me clarify that. There were some additional impervious that Mike's already told us that, you know, and be honest with Mike, he removed a bunch of sidewalk. And then he replaced it with some other things that are considered impervious, which is why he got the CO in the beginning. So, he, what he built in the beginning wasn't quite in conformance with the approval. He removed some stuff, he then replaced it with some stuff, and as crazy as this may seem, as Mike will laugh about it too, is that the original as-built survey did not show the shed that is there. And it's been existing all the time. For whatever, for whatever reason, the surveyor, who is now in jail, you know, that's why this gets crazier and crazier.
What did he do with anything?
Yeah, but I'm just pointing out that that...
He's in jail or he's dead or whatever.
I'm just...
It's not going to do with anything.
I'm just pointing out that when it was originally, we got the as-built, that shed was not even shown on the as-built. The subsequent as-built, it was shown, so.
Had this been done in accordance with the approvals in oh eight, we wouldn't be sitting here.
That is true.
Is that a fair statement?
That is absolutely true.
Thank you.
Is it time to open the meeting to the public?
I did have one more question. You had, you had mentioned paying the fifteen thousand dollars in taxes. I'm assuming that's on the lot that you didn't improve it back in the two thousand and eight. But you came to have it subdivided. That wasn't something the town said you have to subdivide and pay more taxes on, right? That came, that was your request?
They're paying right now taxes on two lots.
But by choice, though. I'm just, I wasn't here in two thousand and eight, that was by choice.
Well, that's a whole nother issue. Let's just say they're paying taxes on two lots right now.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand if we, the town or someone else, split it up and made you pay extra taxes, or you came to us, and, we don't really see a lot of things unless they don't conform. So, you know, every application, unlike other planning boards, you know, we see every application, when they conform, we only look at variances. So there are many things here that are not conforming, and there are things from two thousand and eight and rules that have changed, and now other zones that want to be applied to plans that were approved in two thousand and eight that were in a different zone. And I just have concerns about that, as it relates to the flooding and other things. And your testimony was about the taxes, I just wanted to make sure, that was your choice, not ours.
It was an R forty, fully compliant R forty lot, that the applicant chose to subdivide to R twenty, which was consistent with what was in the neighborhood, has been set. So, at that point, it was, it was very straightforward. Variances had to be granted only because of the historic, or if you will, designation as an R forty zone. But in truth, everything was developed in the neighborhood as R twenty. So, we were fine going up to R twenty standards, because that was what was essentially built in the neighborhood. So it is weird in the sense that we also held to some R forty standards as well, within those two lots, so that's kind of what got weird.
That's what I'm struggling with, yeah.
But I mean, there's been some procedural missteps, I think, on the part of the applicant, that, you know, I want to get straightened out, so that doesn't happen again on the subsequent lot. We're not back another four years with twenty-five point oh one and along the list of variances. So, yes, please, open the meeting to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the councilman moved to open the meeting to the public, and I would second the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to comment?
We're going to have to give them one of the microphones, because we took the one from the podium.
I think we're done.
And before you speak, if you would give your name and address and be sworn in.
My name is Brian Frascholle, I am at twenty-eight Buffa. F as in Frank, R-E-G-E-O-L-L-E.
Very good, please raise your right hand. Swear affirm that testimony you're about to give the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Frascholle.
Okay, I don't know much about planning, and I'm leaving it up to you guys and stuff like that, but I'm completely confused by the whole thing. We are at the house next to the empty lot, where they plan on building. And to my knowledge, I mean, we're an R twenty, like you guys keep...
You're in, you're in, you're, yes.
So if you ever lived in a...
You're in, actually in R forty zone.
We are now, correct?
You're in R forty zone, but the lots are all twenty thousand square feet.
Right, so, his house is gorgeous, don't get me wrong, but if you have that next to you, it's a big house to look at compared to the rest of houses in middle America. And it's his right, you know, he could build a house where he wants to do. And I'm confused, because I thought he was trying to shrink the size of the house.
He is.
Okay?
You, you, you... Yeah, sure, sure.
And that would, we would be gratefully appreciative of that, because the sun comes up in our backyard every day, and if he builds a big house like he did on the other house, it's going to affect us. I also see that the side setback is at twelve feet, where it says the minimum is twenty-five feet, is that correct?
Yes.
So...
That's not changing.
Well, that's for the built, that's for the...
That's, that's question is on the lot, which is already built, because of the shed that's there.
Okay.
It would not necess, it would not carry over to the lot next to you.
Okay, yeah.
The deeper setback would, the twenty-five feet, I think, would govern the new lot.
Okay, yeah, my concern is just the lot that's next to me. As far as the house that he has already, that's what's confusing me, because you guys are talking about that. I don't really care about that lot, no offense, but I'm concerned about water drainage, because the property line between my property line and his, there's about an eight-foot difference. So if you go to look at that property line, you see ground. There's not a lot of, and when they start taking dirt out and everything, that water's got to go someplace, and I'm in the direct path of it. And I grew up in Manville, and I'm terrified of water, okay? So, my big concern is that water.
Well, on the unbuilt lot, the one that's next to you, the only two variances are lot coverage and impervious coverage.
No, no, there's also a side yard, there's also a side yard variance...
That was approved in two thousand and eight.
That, that was approved for...
How can you have a side yard variance when the house hasn't been built?
Because that's what we granted based on the subdivision approval. We granted a variance of twenty feet, where twenty-five feet was required. That's what we granted.
Here's where I'm confused, then. If he's, if he's building another house on the vacant lot, and it's smaller, why do we still have the same variances? I don't get that. If you have X amount of space on an empty lot, and you've already gone through a situation on a house that's been built with variances that weren't anticipated, why wouldn't you build to fit a lot?
You'd have to ask the applicant on that, because that was their request.
I wish somebody could tell me why there are variances on an unbuilt...
Hold that thought, because we're in the public, so I just, let's get through that, and then we can close the public, and then we can go back to these questions.
Variance is on an unbuilt lot that's supposed to have a smaller house.
Oh, okay, just hold that thought. Go ahead.
And I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Can you put her under oath?
This is going to get interesting.
That's my wife.
Do you swear affirm that testimony you're about to give the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your first name for the record.
Jennifer.
My question was just about, and I don't know if you can address it, as you're saying you are dealing with variances, et cetera. We're also concerned about coverage for the side area, the side lawn, that they will have direct view of that house. Now, Mike has already mentioned that he will build a sluiceway for water that runs off, but what about blocking the view with building, with noise, with that sort of thing? Is that something that comes under tonight's meeting?
You mean construction-related?
It's more building trees, like a privacy fence or something that blocks the house, because it's so close to the property line.
So now we can answer that, because we had no plan, we don't know what he's proposing. Seriously.
Yeah, no, no.
Beginning of my first argument.
So, what's the side yard variance on twenty-five point oh one, the unbuilt lot?
Twenty-five point oh one has a side yard variance of twelve point five feet to the neighbor's house.
Okay, what line?
Twenty feet, sorry, twenty feet, from, from, from their, from their, is that a twenty-five?
But that was from the last approved.
Yeah, that was, that was from the last...
So why is that proposed for a smaller house?
My kid, he returned it twenty-five feet, like it's supposed to be.
Yeah, we amended it, it was twenty feet.
Well, we already, we already granted it, though.
Requirement to screen one residential house from another one, like we're planting trees or something, so you can't see your neighbor, that's not really, you know, that's why people put up fences, I guess.
Yeah.
But no, there's really not a requirement, so, you know, other than planting and things like that, but not, definitely not to screen your view of whatever may be built. But the problem is, we don't have a plan to ask to answer your question, because we don't know where this house is going.
I'm not sure if anything can settle that. I'm sure it's not going to get settled tonight. I'm assuming we're going to have to come back?
Well, no, it will get settled tonight, one way or the other.
Let me, let me just, let me just clarify, because the actual, when they, when they came, when they came back, the actual setback variance is twelve point two seven feet, not twenty. Because they moved it further to the other side. That was the variance that was granted, was twelve point two seven feet.
And that was granted in two thousand and eight?
Right, that's the one that was granted in two thousand and eight.
Okay, but if they're building a house in the same footprint, and it's smaller, can't the variances be reduced?
That you'd have to ask the applicant.
Okay, which we will when we come out. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak?
Just do me a favor, use the mic, so just it picks up on the...
Okay, so then, the house is twelve, let's just say thirteen feet from the property line. It's supposed to be twenty feet from the property line.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
That, that was the variance that was granted in two thousand and eight, six years ago, yes.
Okay, but he's trying to change that now?
No.
Not now, no.
No.
That was granted in two thousand and eight for the unbuilt lot.
That's where my confusion is for you, on your behalf. It's not changing, but there's supposed to be a smaller house.
See, because my concern is I don't want the big house back. It's awful big. It's just an awful big house. For where I live, it's, like I said, it's circa nineteen sixty, you know, and it looks like one of the new McMansions that's going up. It just, I don't really want that next to me, so. But that's all I...
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the... Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's, let's go to Bob Thomas first.
First, I want to apologize to the gentleman because I interrupted his, his time, but he did such a good job stimulating me and waking up and, and actually admitting that I wasn't sure what's going on with this other thing, and I'm not sure we really shouldn't have a plan or at least something on paper for the other property because we've been discussing it, and there are some issues. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I think I have to agree with Mr. Thomas because we're, we're presented with something amorphous, which is we are going to build a smaller house on the second lot, but I don't know any way to memorialize that without seeing a footprint of the lot and a footprint of the house, and that we don't have, which, which point has been made from the other end of the table. And I really feel kind of at a loss, and I feel at a loss to be able to respond to the questions from the public.
So what you'd like to see is a plot plan for 2501 showing the proposed house and where those setbacks would be, whether they'd be at the, the same setback that was approved with the variance, or because it's a smaller house, that could be improved. That's what, that's what you're asking for.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Jim's asking for that, too.
I am, too.
You can't clarify it, though, without a, a plan that we can all see. We need to see the plan. We don't have 25.01 even before us, sir. We don't.
I, I think that we are also getting away from the issue that part of the reason for these variances is because of the historic zoning of this property, which was the R40. So if you look at all the houses in the neighborhood and you look at their, their prop, the spacing between the houses, I think what the variance calls for in the original application and what Mr. Giannato's asking, well, that, what it calls for in the original application is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Isn't that correct, Mr. Dominic?
Well, I, I think, I think what the, the board is saying is that they're being asked to approve additional variances for 2501, and they're at, you're saying you're gonna build a smaller house, and you have a neighbor who's saying they would like the house further away, and they want to see where, smaller, where, if that house is possible, to move further away from the line, and they don't have that in front of them. I think that's, I think that's what they're saying. They, they, they believe, based on what I'm hearing, that they need that plan with a certain house shown as far away from the property line so they can say, well, it's fine, or, yeah, let's move it two feet, or see if the, if the individual who lives next door wants it closer or further away. That, that's my understanding with the board, and the chairman can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's what they're saying.
And also how to address the drainage problem.
Well, I, I think the drainage, the drainage issues will all be addressed by engineering. I think the, you know, that, I don't think there's an, an issue about that.
They have to have a plan to address it.
And the applicant has already indicated that dry wells will be put in to conform with the new sewer water act. I think if we look to the original application, I don't think the variances is being requested today for the line, for the property line. I think the two variances that are being requested on the lot that has no house is just the impervious coverage, which we've discussed, and the applicant's willing to adjust to 24.6 or .4 percent, and the lot coverage. And those two things, and part of the reason for the request for those variances is because after building on the subdivided lot and kind of understanding of what goes into that and, and making that, that's why the, the variances are being requested, and also because of the historic nature.
I think you just stated the problem, actually.
Yes.
More than anything else is because we're uncomfortable, I think, with what has been built on the first lot, and we're not willing to grant variances necessarily for something that we haven't yet seen built on the first lot. And I mean, so here's the deal.
Right, but it's coming away from that.
Here's, no, it's not. Here's, here's, here's what we can do. We can do one of, of three things, and I'll give you what I think is should be your preferred solution, and you can take what you want. We can continue this until we get the information we need. We can vote. We don't have to give you any variances past what we gave you in 2008, thereby rejecting this application in its entirety. So those are your two choices. You can continue and give us, give us more information, or we can hold you to what you got in 2008, not anything more, which means your rear yard shed goes.
Okay, let me, let me talk to the.
We'll, we'll vote on it.
Let me confirm with.
You want, you want to vote on it, or you want to continue it? If you want it rejected, then.
Can we just have a minute? I'd like to speak to my client and just make sure that, yeah.
So, so let me just say one thing. So, as you're no doubt aware, the deeds, right, were never, the subdivision was never perfected. Legally, the applicant's entitled to 190-day extension to do that. So we're gonna vote on that motion first, and then you can tell me what you want me to do about the plan beforehand.
Yeah, you, you can, you can extend that for whatever period you want, 30, 60, 90 days.
As a separate motion since they're entitled to that by law.
I'll, I'll do that, and I'll move to approve the 190-day extension for the purpose of filing the deeds only.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Pataznak?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Okay, now to the matter of the variances requested tonight, would you like an extension of time, or would you like us to vote?
Before the board votes, I do wanna add some additional information that has not, just to clarify, and that has not been presented in terms of the changes that the applicant is seeking with the smaller house and how that will affect the distance from the property line to the house.
Okay, you can give us that, but the thing is this, our professionals will not have yet had a chance to review this, and so if you want to give us this and take it into consideration, that's fine, but I would say that you'd submit it to the township and to the zoning officer, and then they will evaluate it and distribute it to the board, but we're not gonna do this on the fly tonight. So, again, if you want to go that route, that's fine, but I would request an, I would, I would request an extension for that, if you have other information material to that. And you've heard what the board really wants, is a, is a plan for what's gonna be on 25.01. So you can give us pictures, I mean, you can do what you want, but all I'm saying is, regardless of whether you give us pictures, Crayola drawings, or an actual survey with a laser, we're not gonna consider it tonight because I need the professionals to review it.
Right. I, I just feel a little frustrated because I feel like the issues become unnecessarily confused because there is, a smaller house will be built.
Well, then, just let's see.
And, and the variances, again, that are being requested aren't, are to, because of the historical zoning of this property, which is zoned as R40.
But we've already changed that in 2008 to what the applicant wanted back then, and if we're gonna change it again, we need to see a plan. I don't know how to be any more explicit than that.
Okay, I, I guess, now I understand, the board's position and, and the board's frustration because understanding and having talked to the applicant, it seems the requests now are overall an improvement, and so I guess the board doesn't, we're on different pages, and, and I understand the additional information would probably help, so.
They did vote on this.
Well, we really have two choices. Either the, the applicant asks for a vote tonight, or we can carry it without further notice to the, to the November 5th meeting.
So, I'm.
Right.
The applicant just had a question for clarification, that if the, if we choose to continue, would that prevent permits being issued subsequent to the filing of the deed?
Well, you know, there, there can't be any permits issued because there is no approval for a subdivision, so the answer would be yes. There's, there could be no permits issued for the, for 2501 because there is no deeds filed or subdivision or approval from this board.
Well, no, I understand that the approval for the subdivision is going forward, and the deeds, that aspect, it's just the variances that are being held up. And the applicant's question is.
The chairman is, the chairman is not gonna sign deeds until our attorney and our engineering department review them, and they can't review them to this whole.
Right, but.
Variance thing is determined, so.
Oh, I see.
So, so the, the answer is that until this board gives their approval, there can't be a building permit issued for 2501.
Aren't you asking her just to submit a normal application like every other applicant to review?
Well, we're asking, we're asking for a new plot plan. What they're ask, what the board is asking for is a new plot plan for, for, for 2501 to show us where the house is gonna be built.
Yeah, if they want further variances beyond what was granted in 2008, then we need to see it. But I mean, at the first order of business ought to be to go file the, at least the deed that was in 2008, so we have some place to go.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, just for the benefit of the applicant and the board, I believe that the minor subdivision was granted.
It was.
I believe that they have an extension now by virtue of this board's action tonight. So they'll get a resolution, they'll be able to file the deeds and perfect the minor subdivision.
According to the variances we gave them in 2008.
That's right.
Correct.
So the 2008 would, would guide any type of future application for permits or anything of that nature.
Correct.
And I just want to address the applicant because, and I apologize, and I, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe.
Well, let's, 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 let's clarify that. If, if the board does not grant the variances for 2502, we will not sign the deeds because they needed a different variance now than was granted in 2008. So we will not sign that deed and allow that deed to be filed.
Oh, I see.
We, 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 we will, we will.
It was a violation on the lot.
Right, we, we will, we will sign, they can prepare the deed for 2501, and if they submit a plot plan that's in accordance with this approval.
Original resolution.
Then with, with this approval, then we can issue a permit.
That doesn't make any sense. We just gave them an extension of time to file the deeds for that 2008 approval.
Correct.
Nothing to do with this or what he's built or is about to build. It's just.
They'd just be in violation of the zoning.
But, but he's in, he's in violation of 2502, so we will not sign that deed. We will not allow that.
What's he in violation of?
He's, he's impervious coverage.
Oh, you're talking on his, on the house that he built?
Yeah, so, so what, what Vince is trying to say, Jim, I think, is that if he had built according to what we granted in 2008, not an issue.
We wouldn't be here.
But since that's not. but since that's not what's on the ground right now, Vince wouldn't sign the deed.
All right, okay, okay, that makes sense. Since now he's actually violated the approval.
So that's a, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Now, you could correct that very easily, remove that...
Yes.
Yeah, remove the shed and remove the impervious coverage.
So as long as there's a remedy and that there's not a, you know, vicious, we're not putting the applicant into sort of a vicious circle of, I can't approve that.
You know, I mean, he has a valid approval and if he builds according to the approval, you've granted an extension, we have to approve the building permits.
And that's what we're prepared to do tonight is to grant that.
And you've done that already.
We've granted it.
You've done that already.
Now, all I need to know is whether, and I'm still waiting for an answer, whether you want us to vote on this or take an extension of time until this is sorted out.
So we'll take an extension of time to get the board additional information on which to make its decision.
So we'll carry this matter to November 5th without further notice. If we don't have the information in time for schedule that, then we can reschedule it. But as of now, for the public's notice, on November 5th at 7:30, without any further notice, this matter will be heard again that evening at 7:30 in this...
Okay, then that's what we'll do. I think...
It's just if the chairman recognizes, you should...
Yeah.
Let's just leave it right now.
Excuse me.
Doesn't work that way.
Well, let me put it this way. It's set for November 5th right now. If what the applicant gives us is not what we want or is not decided on upon then, they can, you know, come back for another extension. We won't hear anything that night. But I can't guarantee that, you know. I would say send a...
You can always come in and talk to us and we'll tell you whether they're coming that evening or not.
And they could also come in, what, 10 days before tonight?
Mm-hmm.
10 days before the night we're going to hear it. Players have to be here, so you can at least look at them and talk to us. Talk to them.
And then in addition, there is public notice. It's just not notification.
There's no further public notice.
It won't be on an agenda?
It'll be on the agenda, yes.
But I mean, no newspaper notice or anything. Our notice here is all the notice they, the applicant does not have to send out any other notice.
So if you could, Vince, just go over the rules for the folks that are affected as far as where they can look and when that'll be posted publicly.
On November 5th, this matter is scheduled. 10 days prior, at least 10 days prior, we'll have everything. You can come prior to that. You can contact myself, Vince Dominak, or Mark Healy at any time and we'll explain to you where in the process we are.
Vince, can they look on the township website for that?
They can look on the township website for the agenda, but it's more important for them to contact us individually to know what has been submitted by Mr. Giannato and what hasn't so we can sit down and we can show them.
Well, what they could do is see whether the planning board has a meeting or it has been canceled, is my...
That is also true, yes.
Thank you for that. That's what I meant with public notice, not as much as the, you know, folks within a radius and the letters and the certificate.
Okay, I think with that, you got anything else, Vince?
Nope.
Well, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second...
All in favor?
Aye.